PM, I will now call this meeting to order. At this time, I please ask everyone to silence your cell phones or any electronic devices. Your greeters tonight at the door is Fire Chief Howard Bailey and Economic Development Director Brian Rodemacher. To my far right and your far left, we have Recording Secretary Taylor Lockhart, City Clerk Susan Dodderus, Deputy Mayor, Zone 1 Commissioner Lori Tallon.
Good evening, everyone. Glad you're here.
Zone 2 Commissioner Travis Sargent.
Good evening, welcome.
Zone 3 Commissioner Kristen Deaton.
Good evening, everyone.
Zone 4 Commissioner Harold Riley.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome and hoping you're dry.
Ditto to that. City Manager Joyce Shanann, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, and we have Sean Finley sitting in his front row there with the glasses on his head, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and to my far left and your far right, we have the two great chiefs, Chief Godfrey and Chief Bailey, and I am Mayor Jason Leslie. At this time, I will give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so everyone please, please rise. Bow your heads, please. As we gather today to discuss the affairs of our great city, let us seek wisdom and understanding in our deliberations. May we listen to one another and work together for the betterment of the city. We begin this meeting with open hearts and minds guided by a commitment to serve the people we represent. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. Okay, on Section 4 here, Presentations and Proclamations, the Ormond Beach Soccer Club was not able to make it tonight, so we're going to reschedule that proclamation to another time, so just keep an eye on the agenda if you'd like to see that presentation. At this time, we're going to hear from those of who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting, or any items on the consent agenda. Each person will get a total of three minutes. First, I'd like to call up David Randle. Or should we say Captain?
That works. Good evening, Mayor Leslie and City Commissioners. My name's David Randle, I live at 99 Chrysanthemum Drive. I'm also a captain here at the Ormond Beach Fire Department and the president of our firefighters' union. As both a resident and an employee of this city, I'd like to voice my support over the proposed budget that's being discussed and considered. I've read the news articles and read some of the comments on the stories, and it's important to me that I get to share my perspective to all of you. I was hired at this fire department in 2006, and that year, we had five fully-staffed fire trucks with about 50 firefighters, and we ran about 5,000 calls a year. Today, we have just four fully-staffed fire trucks, and we have about 43 firefighters, and we run about 10,000 calls a year, or close to it. So, it's doubled the call volume with fewer people and fewer trucks responding to those calls. In that same period of time, we've seen reductions in retirement benefits for our members, and we've fallen behind in some other key areas when compared to neighboring departments. So doing more with less is something that we're used to, but at some point, we need to address these issues. I believe the city's proposed budget helps get us back on track, and it's not, and we need it now more than ever, and it's not just for employees and benefits, it's for the equipment. That increased workload and call volume means more wear and tear on the trucks. Those trucks are getting more and more expensive. A truck a few years ago, brand-new, cost about $700,000. Today, that same truck costs about $1.5 million. So, there's a need for this increased funding for our department, and I just want to tell you that I appreciate your continued support, and I hope when the time comes that you pass this proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Jeff Boyle, 614 North Halifax Drive. I've got a little show and tell for you here tonight. Back in 1997, Christmas morning to be exact, an off-duty firefighter in a pouring rainstorm, kind of like what we have now, brought this to my home. And I think the reason they gifted it to me with autographs of every firefighter in the department was that that year, we gave a fair contract. We also had the issue of advanced life support. It was $3,000 for the training per firefighter and a $3,000 bump in pay. And I'm sorry to report that it wasn't a unanimous vote, but that advanced life support is so important because probably 98% of those calls are for medical emergencies. I've always thought that our first responders should be our highest priority. We have the highest assessed value of our properties of any city in the county. We have the highest revenue stream. Therefore, I believe that the people who serve and protect us should be a high priority as well, and that's why I commend the recent budget proposal. I've had some experience with the firefighters of my own family. Over the last 10 years or so, I took a ride to the hospital and the ambulance. Five years later, my sister was attended to by Ormond firefighters and took the ride, my mother twice. Her second and last was on January 7th. I have to say that the professionalism, the competence, and the compassion of the Ormond firefighters was simply off the chart. And by contrast, the ambulance staff on three of those four medical emergencies raised serious professional questions about their conduct. So, we're lucky to have the people we do. Maybe the county has staffing problems like they do with the lifeguards. I don't know. But I think it's important that we continue to make a high priority, the people that serve and protect us, and not just the first responders, but all the employees. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Jeff. Next up, Stan Driscoll.
Stan Driscoll, 10 Sandlerwood Avenue, Lane, wherever it is. I hope I do a better job than I did last time where I stumbled all over myself, and it's tough to follow Jeff Boils. Ormond is the preferred location in the county. People who can afford to live anywhere choose to live here. We have a long history going back of people living here who care about the town. We also have a long history of the citizens, a lot of people that are here, defending this town. I go back to when they tried to extend the airport to accommodate jets. Everybody turned out, crowds outside on the patio. Then we moved on to the heights restrictions. So you look at the Vista, and you see, you can tell what the city limits are because there's no high-rises blocking the beach. Then under the leadership of three tough women, and I mean that complimentary, stopped the fuel tanks from coming here. So the citizenry, we like our town, we want to protect our town, and we want to keep it that way. This budget, I think, does that. I think that after all the extended, what, four months, I know staff, to quote them, I think they have 80 hours, 800 hours invested in this budget, 800 hours, plus all the commissioners, plus everybody else, the committees, it's a good budget. I don't think the citizens of this town or this city want to do anything to compromise our parks. Figuring out parks, Ramona Park, another thing that we did. That's our park. The county wouldn't give us a park. We paid for that. We volunteered extra taxes to pay for our park, the nicest park on the beach. So, we're not going to stand for any cuts to our police. They, they, they need a new police station. You ought to go for a tour. Our fire department, when we all have to run out of this building in a fire, they're the ones that come running in. So, please, I like the budget. It's a good budget, it's a well-thought-out budget, and don't politicize it by standing up and saying, "Well, I think at this late date, I want to make some changes." With all the meetings and all the workshops, that opportunity is passed. Any such statements now, to me, is grandstanding.
Hello. Debbie Carter, 26, Dormont. Stan pretty much said a lot of what I was just going to say. Because we are a preferred area and a place that people do want to come and live, they are willing to pay a little bit extra to be here, and if that means that we pay a little bit more in taxes, I feel that that's worth it. I don't, I don't, I think one of my things is, is no cuts to code enforcement. I, as a matter of fact, would like to see more proactive code enforcement. That keeps our preferred area preferred. I've lived here since 2002, I've lived beachside, and probably more in the past 10 to 15 years, I've seen a decline in how properties look, how people, just the things that are let's, that slide, and that does affect property values. So, to be a preferred area, I think that being more proactive with that, not pitting neighbor against neighbor, if you see something, if code enforcement sees something, do something, and if it means that you find them, you find them. But if we just keep letting things that are not, you know, code happen, that is going to spread like a cancer, and it has, just drive around some of the streets and you'll see. So, I'm all for the budget also, paying first responders, absolutely. And if it means that we pay a little bit more in taxes, I'm all for it. I just don't see that in a mark, you know, in a market where our property values are going down, that we should be cutting something as important as trying to have everyone maintain their properties. So, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Good evening, Commissioners. Robbie Coleman, 332 Oak Drive in Ormond Beach, and I'm the Vice President of Coleman-Gudimote Construction, and I wanted to take the time to come tonight to thank the Commission and the City of Ormond for allowing and trusting Coleman-Gudimote to do the general contractor services on the Casson Park project. It is truly a gem of our community, and we're grateful to be a part of the history of this town. During the ribbon-cutting, Coleman-Gudimote and myself personally received praise for our efforts, the quality of the work, and the successful completion of an aggressive schedule with a lot of challenging parameters. And while I believe we are certainly a very important part of that puzzle, it, there's a lot more people involved, and so I just want to take a moment to recognize the partners who played a critical role in the project. First, the City of Ormond Beach was exceptional to work with. Sean Finley and Alex Schuman helped push information through the city's process. They were always willing to walk across the street to work through issues. The City Building Department helped expedite inspections so that we could maintain the schedule, and they were wonderful to work with. The entire team at Zev Cohen and Associates, Dwight and Bobby Ball should be proud of the team that they had on this project. Jake Stare and Jason Solotto, they expedited responses to questions that we had and went above and beyond when it came to coordination. John Hall with Hall &amp; Ogle Architects, again, exceptional to work with, always willing to take the call or come to the site to work through the details of Ike's Bait Store, which looks fantastic. Next, our subcontractors. I've been involved with numerous projects throughout my career, and this subcontractor team was one of the best I've been involved with. The "whatever it takes" attitude is what got this job done. When we called and said, "Hey, guys, we're going to have to work on a Saturday, or a Sunday, or overnight," it was always, "We'll do whatever we have to do." I want to call them out specifically, JD Weber Construction, Truant Construction, A&amp;W Construction, Big Value Landscaping, Row Mines Concrete, and Kane's Electric. They really made the project happen, and we couldn't have done it without them. I also want to thank Jimmy Walker with Oceanside Surveying. When we were down to the wire, he helped us figure something out, and he is an absolute genius and one of the best surveyors I've ever had the pleasure to work with. If you ever want to feel dumb, you get Jimmy on the phone and Bobby on the phone and try and figure out what they're talking about. And to my Coleman-Gudimote team, David Donahue is the project manager, Jim Napier, Superintendent, Brittany Perkins, the Assistant PM, these are the ones who did the heavy lifting, working through all the issues which every project has, making sure labor and materials were on-site when they needed them to make the schedule. And then, one more thing that I think is really important to note is, I understand these projects are funded with tax dollars, and I want the Commission to know 100% of the subcontractors on this project were based in Volusia County. Sorry. Many of them are Ormond residents, and I think it's great that they get to be a part of history of Ormond Beach, to walk through that park with their kids like I'll do, and thank you for allowing us to showcase our ability on this challenging project.
Mr. Coleman, before you go, I'd like to also say, behalf of myself and the Commission here, and the thunder and lightning, thank you for coming out, being here, and we really appreciate everything you've done. Did a great job, ribbon-cutting was great, and again, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Mr. Mayor?
If I may, as well, and I know this is a little out of protocol, but, Mr. Coleman, thank you very much. That park is really, it turned out very beautifully. Thank you.
If I can say one more thing, too. I had a resident come to me this week, and he said, "You know, I'm an avid boater. Before, at Casson Park, it was great, it was easy, but now it's awesome."
Any other comments?
Thank you, that's all.
Commissioner Sargent? No? Okay, all right. Thank you. Next up is Colleen McManon.
Hello, everybody. Colleen McMahon, 45, Carrollwood Circle, and I'm just coming to give you an update on the four-year request that I had submitted here to the City of Ormond Beach. Thank you again, Mayor, for calling me back again for the second time. I appreciate the voicemail you left me. Commissioner Tallon, I have not heard back from you on my second request for the four years, so hopefully I'll be able to hold back for you on your email. And the City Manager, I have not heard back from you either to my email. The four-year request is for auto-renew contracts that keeps coming up that you guys keep approving. We have 19 since June. We don't even have certificates of insurance. So my request is that I get to look at, I've got a team of about 20 people now, that we're going to go through those contracts for you to figure it out. So not only have I asked the four-year request for all of you, I've also sent this up to Tallahassee. So I'm also asking for a DOGE financial audit of everybody here. I don't think we need more money in Ormond Beach. First responders, absolutely. I'm a first responder, I'm a nurse. So what I'm asking you to do is give us the contracts, not charge $889. That's excessive money that you're charging. So I would ask you to please respond to me. I have also sent this to the media in Tallahassee, and I've asked for a DOGE, like I said, to bring down. Second thing, I have a question. If we're paying $1.9 million on an auto-renew contract, why do we have poison ivy all over the crosswalk signal off the Granada Bridge? Why do we have barricades, barrels, all over Granada? We have road trash all over that bridge. $1.9 million is a lot of money. Casson Park, perfect, it's beautiful. I adore, I like that, I think it looks beautiful, but we have piers that are falling down, children that can get into the waters. Is anybody looking at the trash that's all around out there? $1.9 million, we need to look at that. Second thing I want to say is that on 978 Parkwood Drive, we have a house that should have been condemned. It's been out there, all the residents in Woodmere have been complaining about it. We just see the cars drive by, your trucks for the Commission, they drive by all the time. Nothing is getting done on that house. The roof is falling in. So can somebody please look at 978 Carrollwood so we can get that taken care of? I do not believe we need to increase the budget. I think we need to get our arms wrapped around all the money you guys do have, and so I would really like to see those auto-renewal contracts come my way so we can look at it, we'll take care of it. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Is it possible that we give Ms. McMahon the, a card to look at that property with the roof that's falling down?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we also have staff follow-up order, too, about that four-year? Next up, we have Elaine Davis.
Hello, everyone. I'm Elaine Davis, I live right here in the terrace. The other lady who spoke earlier about code enforcement pretty much said most of what I wanted to say here this evening. I think the budget is great, I don't think we need to cut anything, especially on code enforcement. You know, I've been here so many times asking and asking to make code enforcement active. It is a beautiful place that we live in, and she's 100% right, and these other people here, this is the preferred place, but it's up to us to keep it that way. So I just ask that you do not cut anything from code enforcement. Please, let's make it active. I think if all of you folks and every employee who works for this city passes by something and sees that it's not right, report it to code enforcement. Use that additional $200,000 to compensate and work on all that, but there's no reason for a neighbor-to-neighbor issue to ever happen again. I've had it happen to me, I know it's happened to a lot of other people. You create havoc amongst neighbors when one reports something from the other, and it becomes a battle. And I just think of every employee in the city, every truck that goes up and down the street, you're seeing it more so than I'm seeing it or anybody that's just a neighbor. Just report it to code enforcement and let them deal with it. Not a fine, it doesn't have to be a fine, I think it needs to be an education, and I think nine out of 10 people will clean up their acts. So I appreciate you guys, and don't touch our budget, it's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. And last card half of the night is Connie Colby. Connie? Nope, there you are.
Good evening. Connie Colby, 108 Roble Lane, Ormond Beach. I have three things, I'm probably going to jump around here a little bit. First of all, when you have events here, you have signs posted here at the bridge. I live up that way. I don't go to the bridge unless I absolutely have to go over the bridge. Is there any way that you can get those kind of information out to people who live west of the bridge? I don't know where signs might go that might be helpful, but a lot of times, I'll see things in the local paper of events that have happened, but they've already happened. We've missed them because we didn't know about them. Skip from that. I've gotten new phones when I went to transfer things over. On notifications, they didn't transfer over, but I started to look. I don't know, is there somebody who is in charge of what gets on the notification place on the internet on your site where you can sign up for notifications? And some of the boards don't seem to be listed on that site that you could sign up for? Like, I don't see, the aviation board is not there anymore. Many of them are not there. I made a list of the ones that are not there, but some of the things that are there are things that, like Newsflash, okay, I might want that, but, like, firefighters pension board, it does not really apply to everybody here. Performing Arts Center, maybe. There's just many of them that the advisory boards are not there anymore to sign up for. So I would appreciate if somebody would look at that and see if there's some way to get those boards back on there. The Housing Authority's not there anymore. Community Development Block Grants, Brownfield Advisory Boards, Board of Adjustments and Appeals, a lot of them don't seem to be there anymore. Thing that, code enforcement, back on that, Harold, I sent you an email on that, I was wondering if there's not some way of dealing with this differently. When I was here for something that you had on, go around to different sites and see what was happening in the city, they had this pamphlet available. It's called Residential Code Compliance and For Information. Maybe, I don't know how your system's set up, but maybe with your water bill, maybe you can define who has residential home, that maybe you could put something like this in their bill one time to let them know what the code is, because that's not one of the first things people actually ask about when they buy a house here, may not know, but that was one of the thoughts. You have the Volunteer Police Department, whatever they're called, and some of them have cards, cars.
Thank you, Dottie.
Okay.
Sorry, you're at the front. Just real quick, are we updating the website, or is there anything going on with that? Why those boards might not show up?
I'm guessing the boards don't show up because there's no vacancies on those boards, but I will double-check about that.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. The minutes for the July 22nd, 2025 City Commission meeting have been sent to the Commission for review and posted to the city's website. Does it, does anyone have any corrections or changes at this time?
Move approval submitted.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion approved. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are deemed routine and non-controversial. The action proposed is stated for each item. Unless the City Commissioner removes an item from the consent agenda, no discussion on individual items will occur, and a single motion will approve all items. Does any member of the Commission wish to pull any items from the consent agenda? Oh, Deputy Barrett?
Yep, I'd like to pull F and G.
F and G? Okay.
Move approval absent F and G.
Second.
Okay, any other further discussion? Seeing none. City Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Tallon? Yes. Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes. City Clerk, can you read 7F on the consent agenda?
Resolution number 2025-130, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an access, maintenance, and utility easement from Harding ZWJ Corp., located in the Amberwood subdivision, a portion of the Hunter's Ridge Development of Regional Impact, located in Flagler County, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-130, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval before we go into discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yep. So, I pulled F and G because of the water that we're providing to Flagler County. I was wondering if Mr. Spriker could come to the podium, please. So I had gotten a few emails questioning that, and on the planning board, we talked about that quite a bit, but kind of as an education piece, why would we want to provide water to Flagler? Is this part of that DRI agreement, and is the one-year maintenance a common practice? If you could please explain that to me.
Steven Spriker, Plan Director with the city. So, over time, as Hunter's Ridge and Flagler County developed, they requested the city of Ormond Beach. At first, we were the wholesale provider, so we provided a source, and it became a wholesale provider. As time went on, around 2016, August 16th, 2016, with Resolution, or, I'm sorry, Ordinance 1625, the city agreed to be the utility provider for Hunter's Ridge, Flagler County. So we are responsible for the water and sewer services within that development. Because these plats are not coming to the City Commission, the only way for us to accept the maintenance of these areas to get any easement is to go through an easement process which you have before you tonight. Within subdivision construction, basically, the Site Planner View Committee reviews the project, they inspect the project, and at the end, they determine it to be complete. When it's complete, there is a one-year maintenance bond, which is the app the subdivision then has to provide. At the end of that one year, the Site Planner View Committee Utilities, in this case, will go out and inspect the subdivision, see how it has fared over the year, if there are corrections, they will acquire the corrections. If there are not, they would accept it at the end of the maintenance bond.
Are we shorting the city any water?
No, I believe you're actually making money because you're charging them at out-of-city rate. So, you know, basically, it's part of the utility master plan, it's been planned since at least 2015, so it's part of our utility infrastructure.
And the utility rate change was from wholesale in 2016 to now retail?
Correct. So each account has their own Correct. So e- each account has their own bill, and that, I think they're 125%, if, if I recall correctly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion on F? Seeing none. Uh, city clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallon?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
Um, city clerk, can you read 7G?
Resolution number 2025-131, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an access, maintenance, and utility easement from Skyway HR Acquisitions LLC, located in the Woodside at Ormond Station subdivision, a portion of the Hunter's Ridge Development of Regional Impact, located in Flagler County, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-131, read by title only.
Move approval? Second.
Discussion? I think this kind of correlates with F right. Okay. All right, so then with no further discussion, I will call the vote. Oh, um, city clerk, call the vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for that update, Stephen. We're going to move on to, uh, before we move on, does any of the commissioners wish to comment any of the consent agenda items?
Of course. Of course. Sorry.
No problem.
Consent agenda, A, opioid abatement funds, just, I'm, I serve on that committee, and I just want to share with the commission that there are many, many, many projects that, that resource funds and is really helping in the community. And I also wanted to just make a comment to B, which is River to C TPO. Ormond has been the recipient of, of these funds, and we have enjoyed the benefits of the transportation project, so I don't have a problem at all, and I'm sure Ms. Commissioner Bryley would agree that we, we benefit from being a partner in that.
Absolutely, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, uh, just, just, uh, to piggyback on what Commissioner Tallon said, um, the way the TPO structures their fees with the cities is they charge 10% of the total population of the cities, so that's why you see the number of $4,500. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion before we move on? Okay. Thank you. Um, I will now open the public hearings, uh, for 8A. Um, see, city clerk, please, uh, read the title.
Ordinance number 2025-21, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, District and General Regulations, Article 6, Overlay District, Section 2-73, Green Belt and Gateway Preservation Districts, Subsection C, Design Criteria, and Chapter 3, Performance Standards, Article 3, Environmental Protection Standards, Section 3-21, Wetlands Protection, Subsection H, Buffer Requirements of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the landscape buffer and wetland buffer requirements for properties located within the 1,000 block of North US Highway 1, Ormond Beach. To be consistent with Volusia County standards, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-21, read by title only.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, um, at this time, do we, this is a second reading, so do we need the planning director to come back up again? No? Seeing none. Uh, does the applicant need to speak on the item? No. Um, we don't have any cards either on this item. Oh, no, we actually, no, we don't. No cards. We have a motion, we have a second. City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallon?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Yes.
Move on to 8B. Uh, city clerk, please read the title.
Resolution number 2025-133, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Ormond Beach affirming a final determination by the site plan review committee to approve a site plan for the development of a proposed Circle K convenience store with gasoline sales at 699 South Nova Road. Site Plan Review Committee filed 2024-000051, denying any, an appeal of the final determination and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2025-133, read by title only.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call, um, Steven Spraker to, uh, come up and talk to Scott. Well, no?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, if, uh, if I can, let me jump in here first.
Okay.
So what you have here, I want to give you some, some guy, some guidelines, uh, for your role this evening. This is, um, different than the matters that you typically, uh, hear. Um, most of the land use matters that you hear, you have a public hearing, uh, you'll take, uh, testimony, documentary evidence, and you kind of weigh that into balance, and, and you'll, you'll make a determination, and you can impose some conditions. This is not what you have. Um, this is an appeal from, uh, what we term final, um, administrative action by the site plan review committee regarding a site plan for the development of Circle K on, um, uh, the corner of, uh, Hand Avenue and, and, uh, Nova Road. Your, your role is more limited this evening than it typically is. Um, these types of matters ordinarily, um, since it's a final determination, would not be heard by the commission. It would be heard by a circuit court sitting in appellate review capacity. So you are essentially serving in that role this evening. Your, your role, and this is by your land development code, is to review the record that was created before the site plan review committee. Um, you do not take any evidence. You do not take new testimony. You don't even hear from residents, because this is an appeal of a final determination by SBRC. So your role is limited in that capacity. Your charge is, um, to look at the record evidence and, uh, determine whether there is any, uh, evidence, competent substantial evidence to support the determination that was made by the SBRC. If there is, then the law requires you to uphold that determination. Um, you essentially have to find that there is no evidence at all, um, in order to overturn that determination. You're not able to reweigh the evidence, and you're not able to substitute your judgment for that of the SBRC. So, again, it's a role that's more appropriately, um, conducted by, by circuit court, but by your code, it comes here. I think in the future, one of the things that we will do is we're going to amend the code, I think is certainly appropriate for this commission, to hear an appeal of administrative interpretations of various provisions of the code. But when we're dealing with final agency action, uh, then there needs to be, um, a, a different appeal route. And by way of comparison, um, I, I will, um, um, you know, remind you that the Board of Adjustment Appeals that hears matters regarding variances, they also issue final determinations. You never see appeals from them. That goes straight to circuit courts. Same with the special magistrate. So, something in the code that we need to get fixed, be that as it is, we're trying to find a way to accommodate the appeal, Ms. Boback's appeal, um, regarding that determination. Um, I will be here to help guide you through that process, because it is a role that you typically do not, uh, perform. Um, your code does not prescribe a, um, sequence for presentations, um, so my suggestion is to utilize, uh, the same format that we've used in other matters. That would be to, uh, um, hear first from the planning director as a, the head of the SBRC for a brief, uh, overview, and then, uh, Ms. Boback can, um, present her argument to you, followed by, uh, the, uh, Circle K folks, and then you can have some rebuttal after that, and then you go into your, uh, your, your discussion. Now, you may want to ask, um, uh, the appellant and the appellee, as we refer to them, questions. That's fine. It just needs to be based on the record evidence from SBRC, and, and you really can't go out that footprint. So, I'm going to try as much as I can to stay out of your discussion and your questions, but because it's different, I may need to kind of pull you back in. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back over to you, and then you can call Mr. Spraker up.
Thank you, Randy, for that clarification. And so, yeah, I'll call up the director, Steven Spraker, to speak. Uh, we'll allow 20 minutes. Um, you don't need all 20 minutes, obviously, if you don't need it, and then followed by the appellant and the appellee.
Can I get the site plan, please? Uh, good evening. Steven Spraker, planning director, uh, with the city. So, as, as the city attorney, um, stated, this is an appeal of a site plan review committee determination. The property is at 699 South Nova Road. Circle K is the applicant. The map, um, to my left is a zoning map. The property is owned as B8, which is a commercial zoning district. The map on the right is an aerial showing the location of the city. Uh, the next slide, the next slide is a, a better aerial, because it's more focused. So, the existing property is a former Bank of America building. To the east of the property, there is residential. To the north and south are commercial properties. To the west is Nova Road, and then the 7-Eleven gas station. The BA zoning district has three types of uses: permitted uses, conditional uses, and special exception uses. So the permitted uses are approved by the site plan review committee. There are no conditions. Those are uses allowed by right. Retail sales is an example of permitted use. Conditional uses have conditions contained within Section 2-56 and 2-57 of the Land Development Code. So there are specific criteria that the site plan review committee has to review as part of the review and approval. The last use is a special exception use. Those go to planning board and city commission. They also have to comply with those, those sections 2-56 and 57, and there's a staff report, and then the city commission is the final decision-maker on special exceptions. So the use before you tonight is a convenience store with gas, gasoline sales. That is a conditional use, which is reviewed and approved by the site plan review committee. Um, starting in February 18th of this year, there was a public comments of a resident who expressed concerns with the gas station in proximity to residential areas. On March 4th, the commission directed city staff to start a land development code process to look at the distance requirements between this use and residential uses. On May 8th, the planning, planning staff took the planning board a discussion item where we received policy direction regarding convenience stores, and we're on the way to a land development code amendment. July 1st came, and Senate Bill 180 wasn't enacted. That is state legislation that preempts local governments from adopting a more restrictive or burdensome procedure for approval, including the issuance of a site plan, a development permit, or a development order. So you can't make a conditional use now into a special exception, because you've made it more restrictive. So that process stops until October 1st, 2027, or until Senate Bill 180 is amended. The site plan included in your packet, um, some key facts. The existing bank building is proposed to be demolished. The property is not in any wetlands, so there's no wet, existing wetlands on property. It is not in the floodplain. It is not within a primary or secondary welfare protection zone as defined by the Land Development Code. The building is proposed to be 5,200 square feet. Um, the site plan complies with the landscape buffers abiding residential areas as determined by a landscape architect. There is the installation of a masonry wall abiding the residential use. The stormwater exceeds the Land Development Code requirements. The stormwater provided is for a 100-year storm. Our Land Development Code requires a 25-year storm. Our, the stormwater plant has been reviewed by a professional engineer employed by the city. There was a traffic study done for the project. Um, city staff hired, uh, HDR, a consulting firm with a professional engineer that reviews traffic. Uh, part of that discussion was a prohibition of left-hand turns in and out of the site, um, so that was one of the determinations of the site plan review committee. And the project also complies with the architectural design standards. So the project started in December of 2024. There was a neighborhood meeting on February 10th, so everyone within 600 feet got a notification. Uh, the applicant did that meeting. There was a couple additional submittals, and then on May 14th was that final, SPRC, a site plan review committee, so that final SPRC determination. So who is the SPRC? There are three voting members. One is a landscape architect. She is a registered landscape architect, myself, um, AICP, and then the city engineer, who is a professional engineer. There are other reviewers who also provide comments, a utilities engineer, also a professional engineer, the fire marshal, and a couple of senior planners. So for this, um, this item, there was a staff summary packet, which is in your packet. Um, there was a police captain who provided a summary regarding the hours of operation. So there was an outside expert of the SPRC who provided testimony regarding the hours of operation. There was a consulting traffic engineer, the one who reviewed the traffic study was also in attendance, and also talked about the site movements and, um, how access should be restricted. Um, the applicant had opportunity to present, there were public comments, uh, I think by about six people, and then the SPRC made a final determination. So that final determination had three aspects. One, to allow a 24-hour operation of the convenience store with gasoline sales, to prohibit left-hand turns onto Hand Avenue with the installation of signage and a painted pork chop area. There is a condition that that, that condition is monitored at a one-year and two-year period after a certificate of occupancy is issued. And then approval of the overall project, subject to the resolution of the outstanding site plan comments, where are technical in nature, it would not change, um, the site appearance. So on May 27th, there was a, a appeal to the site plan determination. Uh, within your packet, staff sought to highlight what the, what the appellant said, staff's response, and the applicant's response. As part of this presentation, I'm only going to go over staff's, uh, I'm assuming the appellant will, will go over there, and the applicant will there. The first was regarding public health and safety. Um, the statement did not provide any land development code reference. Uh, the land development code does not regulate the items identified in the statement. There were no studies or data analysis provided as part of the appeal, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection has regulatory authority over gas stations, including inspections. The second statement was environmental risk and stormwater contamination. Um, again, there are state and federal regulations of the emissions and the, um, chemicals that the appellant, uh, spoke of. The redevelopment plan does provide a stormwater management system. Again, it exceeds our land development code. It has been reviewed by a professional engineer employed by the city. Um, the appellant has not provided any data analysis from a qualified design professional such as a professional engineer, uh, regarding the statements regarding the degradation of water quality and, um, the statements in, in that, uh, item. The third statement was regarding building and energy codes. Uh, the, the statement references the seventh edition of the building code. There is now an eighth edition in, in January 24. Basically, the applicant's not at the building code stage. He's got to get through site plan in order to get to building code. All building code will, will be reviewed by a building staff, and will be complied with. Um, there was a statement regarding, uh, what SPRC might have thought in the hours of operation. There were a number of items, uh, presented. Um, there were the applicant's written responses to the conditional use criteria. There was the other gas stations in the area, which did not have hours of operation restrictions, other 24-hour uses, and, and probably the most important, the testimony of the police captain, who talked about the proposed use and his belief of what those impacts might be. The fourth statement involves incompatibility with the city's comprehensive plan. Um, what we tried to do was provide the actual policy. Uh, we provide the appellant's statement, and then what the policy said. Um, the first one was in the future land use element, policy 1.1.3. Um, this is a land use policy. So there is no change of land use with this application. It is a, a zoning review. It's a conditional use in a BA zoning district. So, um, this, this policy doesn't propose, or this application doesn't propose to change any land use, so this policy is not applicable to this case. Another, the second policy is policy 1.1.5. Um, the appellant's statement says discourage high-risk and pollution-prone uses in residential areas. This policy is, is geared towards residential developments, and, um, in essence, it seeks to allow innovative designs, often through the plan development process. So the text doesn't contain the terms high-risk, pollutant-prone, as stated in, in the appellant's statement. The next policy, 4, 1.4.1, um, this is actually under objective 1.4, which is under the industrial utilities land use. So this property has a commercial land use, so the, that whole entire objective would not be applicable, because that's applicable to industrial uses. So that policy, um, does not apply to commercial properties, um, in that BA zoning district. Policies 2.2.7 and 2.2.8, um, we did not find that in the future land use element. We found it in utilities element. So those policies referenced, uh, wetlands and the allowance of making wetlands as part of your stormwater system. There are no wetlands on the property. The stormwater proposed is exfiltration, so underground. Um, second policy, 2.2.8, says that, um, every project has to maintain their stormwater system. So if approved, they will be required to maintain their stormwater system based on city codes and the St. John's River Water Management District codes. There's the policy if, if there's desire to go into them. It was also in your staff report. The last statement, uh, was divided into two parts, uh, lack of community support. Um, again, there's not a land development code reference that the site plan review committee can, can deny an application based on that. The BA zoning district specifically allows the convenience store use as a conditional use. Those conditions have been reviewed. Those conditions have been reviewed. And then the second part of this was procedural oversight. Basically, you know, lack of biological assessments. Again, the property is not, is not in the floodplain, doesn't have endangered species, and is not within the floodplain. There were references to gopher tortoises. Every project has to basically do that assessment 90 days prior to construction. That is regulated by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission. So, the applicant would have to basically demonstrate there are no gopher tortoises. If they are, they would have to come up with a management plan. In summary, the site plan review committee has reviewed the project in accordance with the Land Development Code. We've required a neighborhood meeting as required. We've reviewed the criteria in sections 2-56, 2-57. Those are part of your packet tonight. The May 14th was a public meeting with an opportunity for individuals to provide testimony evidence. The site plan review committee did consider testimony from law enforcement and the professional traffic consultants. Staff does not believe the appeal meets that substantial incompetent evidence that the city attorney spoke to. The items in the, and statements 1 and 2 are not within the Land Development Code and regulated by other agencies. The hours of operation and the lighting, they are required to comply with all lighting of the Florida Building Code. And then the comprehensive plan, we kind of went through in the staff report and my presentation. And then the lack of community support, that is not a conditional use criteria that the SPRC can apply based on Land Development Code standards. Staff is recommending to affirm the site plan review committee decision. Again, we don't see any data analysis. There's no Land Development Code reference. For example, if you require 30 parking spaces and you provide 29, that's a Land Development Code reference that the site plan review committee failed to meet. If the commission believes we have misapplied Land Development Code standards, that would need to be identified. And the applicant would have the opportunity to comply with those standards through the site plan process. I am available for any questions.
Commissioner Riley.
And this is a question for Stephen and/or Randy. I think, Stephen, when you started your presentation, you mentioned Senate Bill 180. And I know there's been discussion among the commission and maybe even some of the planning board about maybe in the future, not having the desire for a project like this to be so close to residential. But if what I'm hearing, Senate Bill 180 may have undone that. Basically, where we cannot be more restrictive than what is already allowed?
Let me kind of jump in here. So, I think that discussion was provided for general information purposes, but wasn't a factor before the SPRC when it considers, so you really, you kind of confine your... I think for general information, that's fine. We can have that discussion in a broader footprint after this, if you want to do that, but...
Well, I guess any consideration now that we would have, that Senate bill would also affect that, correct?
I haven't made that evaluation, but potentially it could, yeah.
Any other questions for Stephen? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'm going to call the appellate, Ms. Amber Boback, to give a presentation/argument based on the record on appeal. We're going to give her, give you 20 minutes and ready to start when you are.
I am short, so sorry. And I am nervous, and this is a very emotional topic for me. So, I do apologize if I get emotional. Good evening, Mayor Leslie, commissioners, city staff. I am very, very grateful for all of the conversations that all of us have had individually throughout the last six months, walking me through the process, Randy Hayes for communicating with me on the legalities of how the process is going to work. So, that being said, I am still going to say my piece. Everyone keeps trying, I say everyone, specifically the applicant and the arguments that I make try to make me sound discredited because I'm not a professional or an expert in a specific field. But I would like to remind everyone that history is full of people who were not experts or professionals, but still changed the world. Abraham Lincoln, the Wright Brothers, Frederick Douglass, Emily Dickinson, Benjamin Franklin, just to name a few. Being a citizen, a neighbor, a parent, is a qualification enough when stakes are this high? The applicant has tried to frame my intelligence as irrelevant, like I don't belong in this process because I don't come backed by corporate money or a legal team. But I do belong here because I live here, I raise my children here, I drink this water, I breathe this air, and no corporation is going to come into my neighborhood and act like their plans for development matter more than our lives in that neighborhood. The current development system is not working to protect us in that neighborhood. The current system of permitting codes and oversight supposed to serve the public, but right now it's serving the developers first. I refuse to accept a system meant to protect us being used to push us aside. For six months, I have stood here as a neighbor and a longtime resident, bringing forward clear, consistent research, concerns for my community's long-term safety and way of life. High-traffic fueling stations do not belong 100 feet from children's bedroom windows. If this was your street, your family, your water, I hope you would be asking the same questions and expecting answers, not just approvals. Now, I would like to respond to a few of the comments that were made on my appeal. While the applicant claims that there are no wetlands on-site, I do agree that there are none directly on the site property. But record shows and common sense confirms the storm drain system they do want to hook into does flow into Laurel Creek, which is part of our city-designated wetland storm system throughout that Central Park neighborhood. Contamination does not respect property lines. The applicant also, stormwater meets the St. John's River Water Management requirements. That is why I have personally petitioned St. John's River Water Management District's permit. We have a Department of Administrative Hearing full evidentiary scheduled for this September. St. John's and the applicant are trying to dismiss and/or strike my petition, but the fact remains, I was granted a hearing and I will be heard in front of the judge. The applicant also, unfortunately, I did reference the later version of the lighting code, but I have given screenshots to all of you of the updated code where the verbiage is still there. It is not the exact same, but it is still in existence. As far as the city's similar use exists, as far as the 24-hour gas stations, yes, they operate 24/7, but they are not all directly abutted next to the residential neighborhoods. They all have some sort of buffer that is a greater distance between them. And the ones, one directly across is county regulations, not city regulations. I still have a problem with the fact that the applicant says that they have met with several of our residents directly abutting that property because I have signatures from all of them on the petition and emails stating that they were never contacted other than a letter. The wildlife habitats, I guarantee you, they find them. I live there. I personally have seen three gopher tortoises within that Central Park area, crossing roads and wandering through yards. I understand that the code is written so that it allows this use, but as most parents often teach their children, just because you can doesn't mean you should. I personally like to see the city uphold the comprehensive plan ideals to protect the residents' neighborhoods and refuse projects that put corporate convenience ahead of public health. If new neighborhoods are being protected, our old neighborhoods should be receiving the same respect. Tonight, I am asking you to do exactly that. I understand that you aren't voting to allow the use this evening, but as I have heard several times throughout the construction industry that I work in, land and building codes, just like laws, are not always black and white. They are up for interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boback. At this time, I'm going to call the appellate, Circle K, for a presentation/argument based on the record on appeal. And we'll do the 20 minutes again for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, Rob Merrill, excuse me, with the Cobb Coal Law Firm, One Daytona Boulevard. I don't have a presentation or an argument to make with you guys tonight. In fact, I think Randy's given you all the information along with what Stephen's given you. As Randy mentioned, this is what you guys are talking about tonight. I unfortunately had to kill trees to do this, but this is the record. There's a lot of it. I've got a whole group of folks that have been involved in this process that are here with me that can answer questions for you guys. I want to thank Amber, and I think her son actually came with her to SPRC. And I think they've been very, I think, pleasant throughout this process. I understand their situation. I can sympathize with it. But we are in a situation here where unlike when I normally appear in front of you guys, I'm not asking for a rezoning or a comprehensive plan amendment. Stephen and Randy explained to you their basic check marks that need to go off on this one. It was, I think, all of the things that you see in the record here tonight are doing that box checking that we talk about. I don't want to go through and either read this to you guys or even try to summarize it. I'm trying to be respectful of what Randy said, which is everything has to be within the four corners of these documents. If I start to waver from that, I'm afraid I'm going off course. So, if you do have questions, though, about this, I've got all the folks here with me that can explain any questions that you might have about the record itself. So, we're here to answer questions, and that's it tonight.
I have a card here for a Divvy, is that his name?
Yeah, he's here as part of our team to answer questions you guys have.
Okay. Did he want to say anything?
No, he's just here for questions.
I saw a card, he's reading a card, sorry.
Yeah, we gave you all the cards for anybody who might speak in response to questions.
Okay. Yeah, I see two other cards here, too, for a Kelsey and a Jared.
Same.
Okay, same. Does anyone have any questions for the attorney?
Or my team.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. I'm going to call up the appellate again, Ms. Amber Boback, for any kind of rebuttal. And you'll have 10 minutes, no rebuttal? Okay. Next questions by the commission?
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like, and Mr. Hayes, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like our hands are kind of tied on this.
It's a different, it's a different subject matter and it's a different process. So, you're performing in a different role this evening than you typically do. And that role has different criteria that are vastly different than what you normally hear. So, the short answer is, within the footprint of the guidelines that it provided you, it's more restrictive in that way. I guess I'll state it that way.
So, I guess basically what I'm saying is, I certainly appreciate all of Ms. Boback's efforts, her time, her tenacity, her persistence on this project. And it's something that I think I have made quite clear in the past, that I would not like, I would never want to see this happen in our city again, having a gas station so close to residential. However, per your instructions, it sounds like Randy, and potentially with what has happened with Senate Bill 180, it sounds like our hands are tied.
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to be in a position that I'm telling you what to do because that's not my role, right? So, all I can do is to explain the legal parameters. The standard that you need to base your decision on is essentially the same standard that a circuit court judge would apply in appellate review capacity. And that is, was due process provided, were the essential requirements of law applied. In this case, the Land Development Code and the comp plan. So, competent substantial evidence to support the decision by the SPRC. If there's any evidence at all, any, even the legal term as they say, intellia of evidence, then the legal requirement is you must uphold that determination. There's got to be a complete absence, essentially a complete absence of any evidence to support that determination. So, you're performing the same role as a judge would in appellate review capacity. And I understand that it's highly, probably uncomfortable for you in this role because that's not your function. You're used to performing legislative and policy-level decisions. So, within that, those guidelines, yes, you are more limited and restricted in what you can do this evening.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you, Commissioner Riley. With that said, did Commissioner Deaton want to say anything else before I call the vote? Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Amber. I know this hasn't been an easy process. And I wish we could do something to prevent this from going in the future, but I think our hands, as mentioned, are tied. And I do think that staff has done everything within the guidelines regarding this matter. Like I said, I wish we were in a different position. And it's very unfortunate with the Senate Bill 180 and current application. And I get it. And I hope that the applicant, as they move forward, is the best neighbor and helps with the lighting, the walls, whatever other issues that may come up. And I'm sure that they will be. And like I said, I can't say enough, thank you for everything that you've done, all your research, all the informative emails, been very respectful. I can't thank you enough. I mean, I wish every resident was as involved as you and as concerned and as thorough. And it's unfortunate that the code's the way the code is, and we can't change it to prevent this at this time. Our hands are tied. And like I said, I just hope that the applicant will work with you on future requests, on whether it's the wall, the lighting, and different issues. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Deaton want to say something, is that okay? Okay.
Amber, I just wanted to thank you. You went about this the right way. You approached it properly. You approached us with respect and grace, and we appreciate that. I will definitely say that. I wish we were up here to vote for a gas station tonight. I wish I was able to vote no on a gas station for you. I'm not here to do that tonight, but I wish I was. Thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Deaton. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And you all pretty much verbalized a lot that I wanted to say. You know, it doesn't appear, it appears that the applicant met the criteria and is consistent with the Land Development Code. And I really can't find any evidence to approve the appeal. But saying that, I do disagree with some of the decisions made by the SPRC. I know their vote wasn't unanimous. The hours of operation, I really do hope that, I do think they should be limited, only due because of the close proximity of residential housing. I don't think it's fair to compare that with across the street. And same with the lighting. I would like to think that maybe the applicant will work with the residents, at least putting shields, maybe having that same respect and dimming those lights in the evening time. And maybe look at the deliveries, make sure they're restricted for daytime things. And maybe a wall, that's a masonry wall, that's higher and nicely landscaped. I do believe, Stephen, that all the boxes are checked in our planning process. We always talk about those boxes. But I think somehow we need to do better for our neighbors when there's projects that affect them like this. I suggest, and I acknowledge, you know, Senate Bill 180 and the restrictions it's going to be. If we ever have the opportunity, I really would like to look at making some changes when a gas/convenience store is close to proximity to residential. Ms. Boback, you said you weren't brave. But what you've done the last few months is one of the bravest things I've ever seen one of the residents, any residents do. And you truly did it with professionalism. And don't ever underestimate your abilities and your mind to think through a whole process the way you did. You looked at complicated topics that we have the ability to research and try to make these decisions. But you looked at everything and even had to navigate how to do an appeal. What organizations do I talk to? So, don't ever underestimate what you did, okay? You showed everybody how it should work. Your commitment is commendable and impactful, and your persistence was unwavering. You've shown others, and more importantly, and I'm so sad your son's not here, why community advocacy is important. I do regret that this is not the outcome you desired, but please know that you were heard and your efforts were appreciated.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Before I ask for a motion here, I will just say a few things to Amber. You've done a great job with a lot of things. I mean, the emails, the information. I mean, every time I receive something, I was like... I mean, the emails, the information, I mean, every time I received something, I was like, holy cow, like, that's a lot of hours of research and time. And I want to really stress that, don't let this discourage you. You know, you have a lot of great talents and a lot of things that you did, and this was kind of like one of those uphill battles, but you did a great job. Unfortunately, some of the situations that we're dealing with right now legally would just put us in a really difficult situation. I know that one of the things that we talked about early on was that I grew up behind a gas station, and it was a real, real pain in the neck for us. And I understand all the things with the noises and the smell of gas and all kinds of stuff, I mean, that, you know, I had to live through. So I understand that. But you did a great job, and like I said, don't let this discourage you. Still come, still be involved. We need residents like you, so good job in that, in that regard. So with that said, we're done with everything else here. At this point, I'm going to look for a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion before I call the vote? None? City clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Tallent.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley.
Yes.
Mayor Leslie.
No. I will now close the public hearings. We're going to move on to 9A. City clerk, please read the legal title.
Ordinance number 2025-23. An ordinance amending Chapter 24 Traffic of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances by adding a new section to be numbered and entitled Section 20-21 City Paid Parking Lots, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2025-23, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Randy, can you just speak on the item quickly? Thank you.
Yes, sir. So this is the first step in the process of establishing, excuse me, paid parking fees for the parking lot. So this is an ordinance, it'll be two readings, we'll come back on second reading, and then we're still working on the contract, if you will, with the vendor, and trying to time that for when, I guess, everything, I don't know where Sean's at, but we're trying to transition that at kind of the same time. So this is the first step in that process, and at some point, the contract will come back before, as a separate item.
Thank you, Randy.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I might, this is to be similar to the Volusia County paid parking, where residents would park for free. They would just register their license plate, and that's the plan.
Okay. Volusia County residents, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I say?
I have no, I don't have any cards here. Is there questions by the commission? Commissioner Sargent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just hope that as we move forward, we do a better job than the county. Because I can tell you, I've gotten three tickets for parking, and I'm registered, and I've had to fight the tickets, and I had to go down to Daytona Beach shores to fight the ticket, only be told that I had to do it online, which, it didn't say it on the ticket. Very frustrating, the process. I've heard from many residents, I parked on Seminole Beach Approach, I got a ticket, I was parked on the concrete in front of a sign that you scanned for Volusia County, and I got a ticket there. I had to fight it, which it got thrown out for officer error, but how many of our residents had to pay that $30? How many people, you know, I think it's very frustrating to me. I got another ticket, and I'm registered, when I went to a Boys and Girls, or actually it was Boy Scouts Gala at Hard Rock, and I parked next door, got a ticket there, my car's registered. Just very frustrating. I don't think, I hope we do a better job, and I'm confident that we will, than what the county has done. Thank you.
Just a question for you on that one. Commissioner Sargent, is that a vendor issue, you think, or is that a staff issue with the county?
You would need to direct that comment to the county, I'm not involved in it. But all I can tell you is that it's very flawed.
Very concerning. Any other questions by the commission? Okay, well, we already have a motion for approval and a second. I don't have any cards. At this time, I will call the city clerk for a vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
Move on to 10A. City clerk, please read the legal title.
Ordinance number 2025-22. An ordinance amending Sections 15-3 and 15-8 of Chapter 15 Parks and Recreation of the City of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances to provide for the regulation of vaping in parks and at other municipal facilities, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2025-22, read by title only.
Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
I don't have any cards here for audience remarks. This is a second reading. Do we need Randy to discuss the item again? I think so. If not, then I'm going to call the city clerk for a vote.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent stepped out.
Stopped out. And Mayor Leslie?
Okay, so I think number 11, we're going to table that one, so that one will be moved on another time.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to table item 11A1 and A2.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Any other further discussion on it? See, none? Oh.
Do I need to make the announcement here, since we're tabling it?
Yeah, for consistency, it would be appropriate, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
All right. So I will not be able to vote on Resolution A1 or A2 due to my son working with one of the companies that could potentially be awarded the contract. And this was, I can enter in discussion but not vote, and this was, information was given to me by Tallahassee Code of Ethics. Thank you.
Yes.
I echo what Deputy Mayor Tallent just said. I will be abstaining from voting on this item as I work for Foundation Risk Partners. I was advised by the Code of Ethics attorney that I could participate in the conversation but could not vote in it, so therefore I will be abstaining from voting, and I will be turning in my Form 8, per the guidelines, to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sargent. With that said, city clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tallent?
Abstain.
Commissioner Sargent?
Abstained.
Commissioner Deaton?
Yes.
Mayor Leslie?
We will now move on to staff and commission reports, suggestions and requests, starting with city manager, Joyce Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Turn my light, my microphone on. Just a couple of general reminders. Your next commission meeting is on August 19th. It's a budget workshop before the meeting, and then your regularly scheduled commission meeting. And then Wednesday, September 3rd, and Wednesday, September 13th will be our commission meeting days, and those are on Wednesday. And that, please note that, because I don't believe by state law, we're allowed to have our budget meeting heard on the same day as the county. Just a few general comments. Hurricane and storm proactive preparation has begun, and it's been ongoing for a while now. On Saturday, August 16th, public works staff has scheduled a manned sand pile bag fill event from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at Nova Rec. We encourage everybody to get out early to fill their sandbags in advance of the storm. We ask that you bring your driver's license. You can fill 10 bags at a time, and staff will be there to help you. If you drive into Nova Rec and you see that hill up there by the center, that's where you get your sandbags, and our public works crew are very helpful in that event. We've had the sand pile open since June 1st, so the closer we get to storm season, and some of this ugly weather might encourage some folks to get out, and we would hope that they fill their bags before we actually need them. We will be pushing that information out on social media, so everybody will have access to that. We have provided to you First Step Shelter statistics. You should have received those from the First Step Shelter. Parks and Recreation, the Flag Football Youth League is returning this fall, and that's one of our biggest programs that we have besides baseball. Ages seven to 14, and you have to sign up, I think, before practices begin, which is August 25th. Registration is now open online, and please call Parks and Recs if you have any, any questions. Adult coed softball for fall is now open online and in person through Ormond Beach Parks and Rec. There's a teen price of $582, and the registration ends on August 15th. The Hometown Heroes Program, that's, we're very proud of that program, where we display individuals that have participated in the armed forces. That's available. You just need to call Parks and Recreation for more information, and we line the bridge with their photos and recognize them, and it's really a great joy to see family members taking pictures of their loved ones up there, so it's a great opportunity. Our Performing Arts Center has many events booked for the coming season, and tickets are on sale, so I encourage you to take a look at that and sign up now, because those shows sell out quickly. Lastly, I just want to recognize the fire department, they had their promotional ceremony in the Performing Arts Center. It was really a lovely event. We had an ability to have a lot of people there, which is great. It's better than being stuck in the truck bay, and it's 100 degrees outside, and people are falling out, but it's really a lovely event, and I think the staff did a great job there. So thank you, Chief Bailey, for using our center for that. It was a great opportunity to showcase that to your firefighters and their families. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
So any other questions for city manager?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Assistant city manager, Claire?
No comments, thank you. Have a great night.
City attorney, Randy?
Nothing more, thank you.
All right, thank you, Randy. This evening will begin with Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to be brief. I got a call last week regarding, from a constituent, regarding our tree ordinance. And I think this is something we're probably going to want to look at reviewing, maybe want to even just torch this tree ordinance that we have. This resident wanted to put a shed in his backyard, and in doing so, he had to call, and he went through all the proper processes for permitting and everything. And they went to his site, and they looked at it, and I guess he showed them what he was going to do. And this gentleman is not taking any trees out, but being required to put two trees in, because supposedly he doesn't have enough trees on his lot. I don't, I think this is very punitive. I think, especially when you're losing green area, green space, with an accessory structure, which is, wow, he's not asking for any variances as far as setbacks, but he's actually reducing the green space he'll have in his yard, and you're going to require the man to put in more trees, when he's not removing any trees, I think is very punitive, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's right.
What kind of, is this like a metal shed, or what kind of?
My understanding is just utility shed.
Wow.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I may speak. We are aware of this situation, we are reviewing that ordinance, and we will be bringing it back to you for modifications. I've also talked directly with code enforcement, and they are, or should be, I don't know what the date of that issue was, be.
Thursday.
It's Thursday.
It was last Thursday, is when he called me, yeah.
They should not be enforcing that action right now, so we're going to bring that back to you. I think it's some unanticipated consequences as a result of that, so we'll continue to work on that.
I did, I spoke to the gentleman, he was going to be here tonight, but I told him I would, I would speak to it tonight, so. The second issue I have for you is accessory buildings. And we do have something in Land Development Code, and I talked to Stephen about this briefly earlier, we didn't get into the particulars on it. But we have an ordinance in the Land Development, we have a, it's in our Land Development Code, that accessory buildings cannot be more, say, if you're building a workshop or something like that, more than half the size of your primary structure. And I guess that's okay when you don't live on two acres. But I have a gentleman who has been before staff, and he wanted to put in a building, and he lives on two and a quarter acres, and he's been told that his accessory structure can be no larger than half the size of his home. And again, I maybe agree with that, maybe on, on a smaller lot, but when you have someone who lives on a lot that's over two acres, we may want to review, revisit that as far as maybe, you know, impervious surface, or, you know, or dimensional requirements on a lot, something like that. But I think it is, again, I think that's one of those things that, it may be, probably when we passed it, it had the intended consequence, the intended reason, unintended consequence, it may have unintended consequences. The reason was good, but it didn't take into account possibly larger lots. So if there's any desire by the commission to look at that, I think that'll be fine.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I want to thank Commissioner Tallent for your comments on the TPO. The city does do very, we always do very well with our applications with the TPO. Thank you for that. Congratulations again to our firefighters, our new firefighters, our promotions, and our retirees. It was a great, great event, chief, and we thank you for having us there. Lastly, this is something I need to ask my fellow commission members. Realty Pros Assured is having their fall festival again this year at the Casement on October 3rd. And as part of their festival, because it is close to Halloween, they're having a costume contest. And they're hoping the city commission would be the judges of the costume contest. So if you are so inclined, that would be around 6:45, 7 o'clock on the evening of October 3rd at the Casement. So I just need to let them know if we're interested and if we'll be there, so.
Sure, we'll be there.
Okay.
Do we get to dress up, too, though?
If you want to dress up, you can dress up. I'm dressing up as myself, so that's scary enough.
Some of you are in costume already. I'm available.
Okay. Thank you very much, I'll let them know you're available. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll say goodnight, thank you.
Goodnight, Commissioner Riley. Commissioner Tallent?
Yes, thank you. And Joyce, I probably should have asked you when you asked if we had any questions, but I do have a couple of questions for you. So Riverside Drive, we put up an electronic sign a while ago saying construction will happen June to blah, 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 blah. A lot of residents have asked me, what's going on? And I'm wondering if you have any updates, or if you can share with, if staff can share with Riverside, what's going on with that project?
Okay, so we did put some signs up to say we have construction coming, and what we're looking to do is to replace the Riverside Drive Forest Main. That is a very old forest main there, and it needs replacement. So we're in the process of planning that. I think the design is complete. But one of the most important parts of that process is tree preservation on Riverside Drive. As you know, that's our historical tree area. We want to make sure that that canopy is well taken care of, so we're working with an arborist to help ensure that we protect the trees and root impact and have a mitigation plan for that. So currently, as I understand, there are 24 trees, 16 are historic, eight are specimen that could potentially be impacted by the, by this project. A plan with details was included in this, in the report to the arborist, and asked for proper pruning methods for root pruning and stimulation of growth. Staff is meeting with the arborist again tomorrow morning onsite to discuss these issues, and staff is in the process of scheduling a neighborhood meeting in the coming weeks to discuss this information with the community that lives there, so that they have a contact information and they know what's going on.
All right, thank you. And since you mentioned trees, and Commissioner Riley did the same, I think there have been a few, you know, whenever you make ordinance changes, there's always some unintended consequences. And not only in the one you were talking about, I have, I have been, it's been brought to my attention. to my attention in some of the tree permitting as a problem as well. So, thank you for bringing, looking at it and bringing it back to us to, to address those issues.
As you said, there's always a little cleanup when you have a large revision like that, so we are continuing to explore that, and we'll bring that back to you.
Appreciate that. Another question. Any, I mean, we've heard all the residents talk about the downtown roads, the medians, the construction, FDOT. And I know you've heard all of us ask staff, what, what can we do? Is there anything that we can share, anything we can do with FDOT to, to make that situation better?
I'm so glad you asked that. Just last week, Sean and I went to the land to meet with Jim Stroes, and he's a district traffic operations engineer there. Our consultant, Miriam Giavi, also joined us there. And we brought the pictures that Mr. Marvin Miller had shared with the Commission to share with the, our concerns about the bump outs and, and whatnot. They were very receptive to our concerns, and, and those are the residents, and they are making modifications to those current projects to remove those bump outs and just put like a painted stripe instead of the bump outs there. They'll be paving that roadway in the near future, but they, they recognize that those bump outs are difficult and challenging for some drivers, and probably not in the best interest, and we can probably do more with painted areas than those bump outs.
And there's no bike path down there, right? Because bike paths can be painted like green if it's-
Yeah, there's no bike path.
It's not a bike path, it's just-
Roadway.
Roadway, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for advocating for us, because I can speak for everybody, and we've all heard it from multiple people, and we want what's safest, but we also-
Well, let me tell you specifically about what they're going to do on, on the roadways, so you have some more definition. FDOT is working to remove the ball bots located east of Halifax Drive. They're removing the chicanes, those are the lane shifts that we've talked about, consistent with lane widths. They will modify the curb radius at Halifax Drive. They are modifying the separator at A1A. And FDOT is looking to relocate the traffic control cabinet that's in front of the Orman Garage.
Oh, good.
Because that's like a bad location for that. The city has requested the review of additional ball bots and chicanes installed on West Granada, which is this way. So they're, they're very willing to look at that. FDOT has modified the sidewalk along the west side of A1A. The city has requested a review of the installed sidewalk and any opportunities to further improve that, and that's particularly along the golf course section. And, and the difficulty there is the golf course has a wide right of way there, so we're hopeful that they can do something as far as that's concerned. We also talked about Nova Road. I'm pleased to say that the FDOT did a traffic study, and it did merit a light at the Publix across from the nursing home. You know, we've had a number of accidents there, people coming out of Publix, and so it does warrant a traffic light, which will help slow that traffic that starts at Granada and goes to Wilmette, because you'll have that break there, so that we're happy about that. I don't know the timing of that, but that's in the works as well. Additionally, they're currently reworking their conceptual plan for Nova Road. As you may remember, that they proposed eliminating one of those lanes. And in rethinking that lane reduction now with the addition of the stoplight, they will probably stripe that wider, but they're not going to eliminate that lane, and we think that that's probably for the best. And we've heard it from a number of people about, you know, that lane diet and how, you know, five or six or 10 years from now, that we would, might regret having that lane gone if there's, you know, more traffic in that roadway. So, they have expressed a desire to look at that, and they'll come back to us with some additional information. So, that's about it I have on that.
Great, well, thank you. I really appreciate that. And lastly, I just want to say that, you know, last week we saw the mayor's Q and A within the Observer regarding the budget, and I just want to say, Mayor, I really wish you would have brought up some of those ideas that you shared in the paper at our actual workshop, so we could have discussed them. I think we all want to keep the rates as low as possible in our city, and we're fortunate right now to have such relatively low taxes and fees right now. I hope we can still get a chance to do that, because the needs we have in our city are real, and so too is our collective desire to meet those needs as affordable as possible. I'm sure staff has reviewed the idea you referenced in the newspaper, and I hope we can talk about those and any other possible changes before we vote on the final tax rate next month. I welcome all ideas, just like everyone up here, to save money while providing the important services. And tonight we heard from multiple people, residents, how they support our first responders and our police, and I appreciate them coming up and speaking to the mic, in the mic. I also know that all of us feel the same way. I love the Observer, don't get me wrong, but doing this in the newspaper and not from the dais doesn't actually help the process. And I think the best way to do it is in a meeting. Just like in the meeting we had right before, you had mentioned, this is the time to discuss health insurance, the time to discuss the budget is in the budget meeting. And the only place we're allowed to talk about these matters and exchange ideas and dialogue are in those meetings. So I'm really looking forward to an active meeting next time in the budget, and I hope all of us bring any ideas that we can to be discussed. And with all that, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh Pringle, thank you for the note. You know, he sits here, I guess, during the, one of the board meetings, and it says, "You're doing a great job." So it's nice, I feel like I'm back in-
I'm jealous.
I'm back in middle school when my mom used to give me notes in my lunchbox. I feel like that's what I sat down to tonight, so thank you. Robbie Colvin, Casson Park, that ribbon cutting was amazing that we did. And just wow, I mean, all the subcontractors are local and Orman Beach residents. I mean, that's, that's a huge project that everyone participated in. Thank you to everyone that came out tonight in this wonderful weather we had. There was some pretty heavy lightning that we had for a while. Also, thank you to FDOT. I don't know if anyone's listening from FDOT, but while we've had lots of issues, if you will, or complaints, they have been very great to work with the city staff to get them all resolved. I mean, we can't ask for much more. I mean, they dug up the sidewalk, redid it, they're digging up the medians, the things that, you know, didn't work, and they acknowledged it, and they're being a really great partner with the City of Orman, so thank you. Orman Beach Fire Department, Chief Bailey. I don't know, is Chief Godfrey over there, or is he sitting? I'd be hiding, Chief. I don't know, the Fire Department, wow. The PAC, what an event that was. You know, we had, and actually, I think it deserves to read their names, for the new hires, we had Nicholas Duh, and I'll probably mess up their names, forgive me, Kayla Traylor, Jack Reynolds, Drake Goodman, Clay Carn, Ben Lloyd, I'll try to be out of here before nine. Badging, we had five officers badging, and badging is after their first year of service is when they receive their badge. If I'm, is that correct, Chief? Thank you. That's, so the badging were Peyton Black, Mark Pinkman, Brandon Hadzard, Johnny Mayor, and Cannon Tarnow. And then for promotions, we had Mark Allen, Garrett Fisk, Michaela Lakes, Alex Maverick, Josh James, Nick Nates, Mike Rainey, Rand Bennett, and Jeremiah Ingram. And we had three firefighters that retired, Tommy Bozeman, Lynn Taylor, and Eric Summerland. Oh, four, Keith Crockett, I'm sorry. And wow, Tommy Bozeman, I guess, retired a year ago, because he had some hair on him. I mean, my gosh. I was like, how long ago did he retire? And thankfully, he clarified it for us and said, he's been retired for about a year. But Chief, you do a great job, both of you do. But this time, I got to give a shout out to the Fire Department. Very good job, and I'm very pleased with, with that. Now I'll move on to some other notes that I made. You know, I too was blindsided, as the community was, by an article in the Observer last week. So I wrote some notes down. Mr. Mayor, if you want to address them, that's fine, if not, you can just listen to them. But I feel like it's, it needs to be addressed from the dais and not from me doing a Q and A in response to a Q and A in the Orman Observer. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, the community was blindsided by the Q and A that you initiated with the Orman Observer. Please help the community understand why this information was vastly different than that you stated in the budget workshop and the commission meeting. I agree that this millage rate was a starting point, and I look forward to working with you, the Commission, and staff to provide relief to the residents regarding their property taxes. Code enforcement, the data shows that our residents want a proactive approach. This should not be an additional personnel to be out writing tickets. It should be for education and assisting our residents to help find ways to bring their property back into compliance. It is a win-win for our community, and it cannot be delayed any longer. When I ran my first election and got elected, I sent out surveys to every resident in my zone, and these are the ones I got returned. And every single one of them says we want stricter code enforcement. I don't think that we can push this can down the road. We get residents in here all the time asking for stricter code enforcement and a proactive approach to it, and I am not willing to kick this down the road any longer. And I don't think the residents are either. There is a need for, to add two park maintenance personnel. I need to put on my glasses, I'm sorry, pardon me, I'm getting old. This will help keep our parks the best and safest, safest around, like you showcased in your tour of the city with the news crew. Mr. Mayor, you made the following statement, and I quote, "And you know it could lower litigation costs because we are self-insured right now as a city." At some point, could you please elaborate how leasing vehicles would lower litigation cost? I'm not sure, I've looked into this, I don't know where that meant, but that's a statement made in the paper that I think the residents deserve an answer to. Should the city increase taxes to enhance security at City Hall was one of the questions. To me, and I believe I've heard it from others on the dais, safety for our residents and employees is top priority. This upgrade will enhance security to all of our city-owned buildings. Mr. Mayor, you stated the following, "I don't feel too warm about the current tentative rate right, right now. I would like to have seen which each department in the city asked for and what the change was." So if there was just 3% to add from the year last year, what exactly are we spending on? Mr. Mayor, I ask you, did you ask for this information from staff? This comment undermines the hard work the city manager and department leaders put into this budget. Mr. Mayor, have you found any wasteful spending? I have not found any. However, if you have, or anyone has, I would like to know about it immediately so we can address it. Can you please explain also to the residents what a zero-based budget is? What municipalities, municipalities in the state of Florida use it? These are all questions that were brought up in a Q and A, but not in a workshop, not at a commission meeting, but in a newspaper with an article that was initiated by you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to our next budget workshop, hearing more from all up here on the dais on how, on how we can lower the millage rate. Also, I would like to ask residents if you see anything in the budget. Anywhere where we can cut, please bring it to the attention of any of us, so we can address it at our next budget workshop meeting in a couple of weeks. The residents deserve better transparency from the dais, from workshops, and not papers. Thank you, and good evening.
Commissioner Dean?
Thank you. I know this is a topic that I have been very passionate about since being elected, but one of the reasons we are aiming toward a more proactive code enforcement is due to the overwhelming amount of code enforcement complaints we get daily, whether it is here at meetings, via email, or by phone. We are allocating some money from general funds, not the tax rate, to start a more proactive approach. I think it may be time to reestablish a code enforcement or neighborhood improvement advisory board. In addition to creating an additional bridge between the city staff and the community, this board can also help deflect some of the non-code enforcement requests and the department currently receives. In addition, I think it's critical for the city to make enhancements to the city's website for the code enforcement department that clearly outlines what it is and what is not within the department's scope, if only to help direct, redirect some inquiries. I would love to get the input of the city attorney, since we do utilize a special magistrate now for code enforcement.
Apologies, what's the question?
So I would love to see if we are going in a more proactive approach, something regards to a code enforcement or neighborhood improvement advisory board, but we do use a special magistrate, you know, simply to help, let's say, maintain or redirect some of the current complaints that we get.
Okay, let me try to answer the question this, this way. The, you're right, there's never a simple answer to the questions, because there's never a question, and it's never about the answers, it's always about the question. So-
So can we get an advisory board?
So, I think, to be very frank with you, I'm not sure the value in an advisory board. And I want to share some history with you. I mean, I've been here a very long time, as everybody knows. When I first started, this city and most cities use code, code enforcement boards for their primary means of code enforcement. And back in the old days, it was proactive. And in those days, I think we only had two or three code enforcement officers, and they would-
Exactly.
Exactly right, so you jumped ahead of me there. It's quite, quite all right. But, you know, the, the board was efficient, but it was a bit cumbersome. We had seven members on that board, and meetings went forever, because you have seven different, seven different viewpoints. In the early 2000s, the City Commission decided that it wanted a more efficient streamlined method of code enforcement. So I actually drafted the ordinance that we've got and use today, and it's been very effective. Initially, we used retired judges, but because of some legal requirements, we had to stop doing that, so now we use very experienced attorneys as our special magistrates. It's, it's a much more efficient city, so, I mean, code enforcement system, so much so that our ordinance was used by other municipalities that wanted to duplicate the same system. So, where I'm going with this is that I don't know having a two-tiered system is going to be more efficient. I think in some ways, it's going to be a bit more cumbersome. I think really, in, in order to make code enforcement more efficient, it just has to go back to perhaps being proactive. Now, I will share with you this, and, and this will happen over a period of time. The reason why the prior commissions made a policy decision- The reason why the prior commissions made a policy decision to go to reactive is because they were receiving a lot of complaints by residents when it was proactive. Harold, you may remember some of this. And so the commission made a decision, a policy decision, to go to reactive. So that's a policy decision. You could, you could make that, you could change that policy decision at any time, but there's going to be a cost that comes along with that because we've only got two code enforcement officers now, three? So, you know, it's going to require more, more people. I think having a, a one system to enforce it with more people is going to make it more efficient than having a two-tiered system. I, I just, I, I don't, I don't think that's going to be, I, I just don't see that working very well. So that's my answer.
Okay, so do we need to look at making a policy change to making it more proactive? Going from reactive to proactive?
Do you want that?
You would certainly have to have an ordinance change. The proactive piece, no? The proactive piece comes from, we can self-report, the officers can self-report. The reason the proactivity kind of was eliminated is because there, as Randy said, there was lots of complaints, but the, the, the state requires that there be a reporting party. So that's why a lot of neighbors don't want to report, because they don't want to be, they don't want, you know, Harold to call me in because my dog's in the yard or whatever. I don't have a dog, but, you know, they don't want to do that. And neighbors don't want to report neighbors, but they don't want to see the blight. So we can do that, but we have, you know, we have a supervisor and three code enforcement officers, and we have one administrative assistant. The more proactive you become, the more complaints you're going to get, and you're going to need more personnel to do those complaints, as well as to prepare the documentation for the special magistrate. So you're going to need to process all of that, so.
So what we're doing now isn't working. It, it's not working. We're getting complaints constantly on code enforcement.
I think that I've.
Well, we have money in the budget to, to look at that.
Yes, we do need to look at that, absolutely need to look at that. We're getting complaints nightly up here. I'm getting them by email. I send you guys emails when I get them, I forward them multiple times a week. I don't think I'm the only one who has set it up here tonight. We, we have an issue with the code enforcement. We've got to be more on top of this. We're Ormond Beach.
Well, your budget does include additional funds to, to begin that process.
So do we need to make a policy change, or do we need to do anything at this moment other than you hear from us, we've got to fix this?
I think the next step is to have the workshop. So we've been working, we've been in discussions with a consultant, and we are not able to bring that agreement back to you all pending the budget, right? We want to make sure that this is included in the budget. Once we do that, that consultant brings a wealth of information about what other communities are doing. This is not an uncommon problem, right? Like, this is something all the communities are dealing with. They can give you some options, see what you all like, how you want to go about implementing this proactive approach, and then that will be your direction.
Okay, let's get the workshop going then, please, so we can get that on the books.
So we can get that as soon as.
Yes, please, that would be fabulous. Thank you. Okay. Regarding the tentative millage increase, I would just like to reflect on the process it takes to get to the tentative millage. The budget process starts in March. Since it takes quite a while to complete, we attend multiple workshops where we all take feedback we receive from the residents and implement those into capital improvements to derive a strategic plan. The community expresses needs, wants, and desires through surveys and residential input. Public safety, trails, recreation, code enforcement, and parking are just a few of the needs expressed from the residents. All five of us agree on the plans to be input into the budget, and then the Finance Department and Budget Committee work diligently on the budget and a proposed millage. City staff submits their budget for all of the different departments. All five of us unanimously adopt the strategic plan that we use to derive the budget. As we are all aware, we are experiencing heightened inflation across the board, not just at the grocery store and gas pump. Vital needs for the city cost more than they did last year. For example, the cost of vehicles has increased, not to mention the financial impacts of tariffs. A few months ago, I traded my car in due to an engine recall. I bought the exact same car I had, but three years newer. It was $14,000 higher in cost than three years ago for the same car with the same features. The cost of asphalt and concrete has increased. The cost of chemicals has increased. The higher cost also derives a cost of living increase for employees and first responders. The cost of items that we don't necessarily think about daily has increased since last year. I'd like to give you a breakdown of the budget increases. $1 million for fiscal year 2024 police salary increases. The previous commission committed to this last year. They used reserves to cover it, but it is an ongoing expense. $1.8 million is proposed for collective bargaining agreements for police, fire, and general employees' wages and pensions. This is necessary to attain and retain the high-level professionals that Ormond Beach residents deserve and expect. $277,000 for general vehicle and equipment replacements. Our general employee and parks and ruck vehicles are kept on average eight to 10 years. Dump trucks, roughly 15 years. $155,000 for public safety vehicle and equipment replacement. Police cars have a goal of seven years or 100,000 miles, but some of our squad cars are up to 11 years old. The commission previously committed to replacing nine squad vehicles. However, with the cost of vehicle increases, that commitment would have only given us seven squad vehicles. Law, order, and crime are a national concern right now. We deserve to have an ample staffed police department. The Ormond Beach Police Department is historically understaffed. In 2022, just three years ago, the Ormond Beach Police Department's starting pay rate was seventh in the county. Now, we are the second highest. The safety of our city and its residents is of utmost importance. As you can see, the majority of the increase is for public safety. The truth is, Ormond Beach is consistently the second lowest millage in the entire county, while maintaining the highest assessed values on homes in the entire county. This is important and makes us a desirable community to live in. The only reason Ormond Beach is technically the lowest, not technically the lowest millage is because DeBarry has two large power plants that generate utility-based tax revenue for them. I have studied this budget front and back for weeks now. If there is a way to cut the taxes without negatively impacting public safety, I'm happy to listen. It would take cutting $2.4 million from the budget to keep the same millage as last year. Where does that come from? Public safety. If we implement the proposed millage rate, the average homesteaded household will see an increase of $106.50 a year. That is an $8.90 a month increase for your average homesteaded household. I did extensive research on the lease option for the city that was mentioned, speaking with multiple dealership owners, finance and insurance managers, the fleet manager for the city, and the city finance director. A vehicle lease is a cost-effective approach used for shorter-term vehicles. The city uses their vehicles anywhere on average from seven to 11 years. With that math, it would cost more to lease vehicles for the city. Because we self-insure, and we don't have traditional full-coverage comp and collision, we would be limited on our leaseholder options. If the city can find a leaseholder to hold a commercial lease for us, it would likely come at a higher interest rate, a higher cost, due to our self-insured status. The city has looked into the lease option before, however, there was not a savings due to the length of time we maintain vehicles, combined with increased mileage and additional wear and tear on the city vehicles. To be fair, none of us want a tax hike. Anyone can say they're advocating for a lower tax rate, but unless you're bringing solid solutions to the table to actually lower the tax rate, you're just politicking. Some politicians went to campaign and say they don't, they didn't vote to raise taxes. We get it. But for all of the first responders out there, please know, I will not personally deny you a competitive wage and pension just so that I can say I didn't vote to raise your taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deaton. I will close off with some things that is the Cassin Park ribbon-cutting was really nice. You know, I really appreciate the builder coming out today and speaking on record and taking his time out of his, you know, evening to come out and talk about those things. One of the things that did come up from resident emails, and I think some of the people in the commission here might have gotten those emails, was about the parking for non-trailer vehicles. And so I had a chance to talk to the city manager about it and address those concerns about, you know, will we allow regular vehicles without the trailer attached to them to park in the park so they can enjoy the fishing pier and, and maybe some other things on the amenities on the park? So I just wanted to kind of get a feel from the commission if you received those emails and what your thoughts are about it, if we wanted to allow that for certain types of the year, or, you know, on-peak, off-peak, or evenings, or whatever, so that residents can also enjoy it, you know, besides the purpose of having a boat to launch and park their trailer.
I personally have not received that, but I think it makes perfect sense to look into. There are a lot of people that do use the pier and, and all, and I haven't really paid that much attention, but I think it's worth looking into.
Okay, thank you.
I have not received any complaints about it, but I do know that we used to have blue signs up that said Friday, Saturday, and holidays, boat trailer park in only. Are those signs still up, Alex? Okay, so it's really, otherwise, they can park there Monday through Thursday without any issues. It's just the, the weekends and holidays that, that are there. So I'm okay with the way it is now. I haven't had any complaints regarding it.
I would concur with that.
I haven't had any complaints, but if the signage is there, then that's applicable.
Okay, so the, the question then is that there are signs already there, and nobody will receive a, a citation for parking there without the trailer?
As long as it's during the times that aren't listed.
Yeah, well, during the times that's, that's listed. Okay. As far as the Fire Department goes and the ceremony on Fri, this past Friday, it was really great. Everyone in the commission had a chance to go. In the past, I was told that a lot of those ceremonies were done in the, in the bays of one of the firehouses. So to be inside the forming arts center that's been remodeled and the air conditioning and good sound system, comfortable seating, was really a great event. We had a chance to celebrate some retirements. I think the three retirements combined was over a century of service, which is like phenomenal. Oh, four, I'm sorry, correct. We had some new people come on, and then we had some promotions, so it was a great ceremony. Good job for everybody who was involved. Chief, you know, good go to everybody who was involved in that. I think I said yes to October 3rd, Commissioner Riley, for that Realty Bros thing. I said yes to that, right, October 3rd? As far as the other comments that were made about the, the Q and A in the Ormond Observer, you know, a lot, at this position here, you know, people, when they are curious, or they want to know something, what's happening, any concerns, who do you look at? The mayor, right? The mayor, what is the mayor doing? And now, you know, a lot of people don't even understand our charter either. You know, we're, we're part of a legislative body here, and the only difference here is that some are voted in their zones and on the at-large, and I do some ceremonial duties. But for the most part, people look at the mayor and say, you know, what's going on? And what are you doing? And it's a lot of weight on your shoulders to have. And so, you know, I did have an interview with the Observer, and it wasn't to discredit anyone here in the dais or discredit staff. It was just to be a little bit more open about what's going on, maybe some of my thoughts and opinions on it. But, you know, it's a really difficult thing to talk about some of these things in the, in the budget workshop, and we have about $160 million to $161 million in our budget, and these things are kind of crammed together a lot of times, you know, and we, we talk about it throughout the process here, but they are, you know, put together, and we're in a workshop, and we can't, nobody here in the commission can talk to each other outside of sitting here or any publicly noticed, publicly noticed meeting. So sometimes, the only time we get together is to be sit here and talking. That happened early in the workshop, you know, something was brought up, and I said, you know, I did say something about how this is the only time we get to, get to talk freely about whatever's on our minds. And the intent for what I said was just to talk about some of the things that is going on, some of the things we're facing, but I never criticized our first responders. I never said that we should cut back on anything they did, you know? I was a first responder when I was younger, in my teenage years, and I decided to go a different direction. I know what it's like to be in their shoes, too. Only thing I did was raise the concerns about some of the things that are going on in the budget, and those are, and those are some of the bigger items that were brought to us by staff. Now, we had some other added expenditures that we talked about, like the pro-code enforcement, and I never said that I was against pro-code enforcement. I just said that, you know, the staff is asking for $200,000, and what actionable things are we going to do from there to, to, you know, implement these more pro-approach? I mean, I lived in communities where we did have a pro-approach, and it required a lot of people, a lot of staff, a lot of court appearances. I even bought property that had violations on it, and I was able to close on it, property, by getting the fees waived, because the city was so happy to see that somebody else is going to take over this property and clean it up, that they were willing to do that. I'm not saying it's going to happen here, but these are just, this is, you know, you can understand the frustration that goes on with the, the city when they, when they were willing to do that to you, you know, to say, you know what, you're going to take the property and clean it up? Great. But I never said, though, that I was against it. I just wanted to see more of an actionable plan about what we're going to do to make this program effective. As far as the leasing of vehicles go, it was just something that came to mind. I mean, I came from the car business, and the way leasing works is that you pay for the depreciation of the vehicle. So if it's a three-year lease, by the time the three years is up, whatever the value of the car is, that's the balloon payment, right? Because that's, when they, when you initially lease the car, they figure out, the lease company figures out what the value of the car will be in three years, and that's your balloon payment, and then the vehicle goes off to auction, and hopefully, the vehicle will get back the value of what they projected. And if you went over your mileage, or you had some other, you know, you know, dents on the car and things like that, then that can really change the value of it. But that's just kind of how it works. And so the reason why I brought it up was because of the fact that, you know, with public safety particularly, we need a reliable vehicle to get from point A to point B. So if we have a vehicle that's leased and it's three years old, or two years old, or one year old, and we're rotating them every three years, the reliability of that car getting there is probably pretty high, because it's going to be a newer car, newer equipment, so on, but we're only paying depreciation. You know, when you hold on to a car for 10 years, 12 years, however long we hold on to cars here, the, you know, the requirements of maintenance starts getting higher, you know, because it just, you know, that's what happens when a car vehicle gets older. We've all had older vehicles, and we know what happens with older vehicles. And as far as the insurance goes, yes, we are self-insured. But I've heard the city manager say a few times in the last six months or so that we have vehicles that get in some kind of collisions, and we have total loss. Now, if we're self-insured, we have total loss, that means that we're not going to get a replacement back on the cause of the value of the vehicle. So if we have insurance on it, and we have a total loss, we'll at least be insured on the value of the vehicle to at least help cost of the replacement of it. As far as litigation goes, we're self-insured again. We've had the city attorney come to us and say, you know, we have some litigation for an accident or a rear end that happened with a ploy or whatever, and we settled out for this much money. We do that because we're self-insured, and we have to litigate our own, you know, insurance claims that are against us for any kind of incidents. Now, if we have insurance on the vehicle, we're insured for any kind of incidents, not just collision, but, you know, you know, any kind of injuries that occurred, and that could also be factored into, you know, eliminating some expenses that we have with the litigation that we might go through now with, with accidents. I don't know how many accidents we have and those type of incidents, but, you know, I've seen at least one or two come through here in the last six months. So in conclusion, is that this was no way to take away anything from what we're trying to do here as a group. It was just that, you know, when people in the community come to the mayor and they say, what are you doing? What's going on? Just wanted to give them information about what's going on, what's happening, and that, you know, are we really separating the wants and the needs on our budget? And if we are, and we have everything right, then we have everything right. But there's nothing wrong with just questioning it and asking it. And that's all I have tonight. Meeting adjourned.